This time I called order of public hearing of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, June the 6th, 2022, at 5:30 PM at Frank County Justice Center here in Carinsville, Georgia. We note for the record tonight that we have a quorum consisting of all five commissioners. We have four commissioners present, and we have one Commissioner Kyle Foster join us by Zoom. He couldn't be here tonight. So Commissioner Foster, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So we have a forum. So thank you everyone for coming tonight. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the public hearing agenda. So commissioners, at this time, is there a motion to approve the hearing agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Westers made the motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Franklin, seconded the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the hearing agenda as presented signify the raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Okay. Thank you. Motion will carry four to zero, and the agenda is approved as presented. The purpose of this afternoon's public hearing is to receive public comments for or against proposed zoning applications that will be considered for action by the board at tonight's regular board meeting that will immediately follow this hearing. No action will be taken at this hearing, and all parties are welcome to remain after the public hearing for the regular meeting itself, which usually starts at 6:00 PM. Tonight, we anticipate because of the length of items that this will go long, so the regular meeting will start shortly after the end of the public hearing. We have several items on the agenda. After introducing each item, the planning director will present a description of the application, as well as his recommendation, and the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll ask the applicants, if they're present, to speak first on behalf of their request. After the applicant has spoken, we'll call first for anyone who wishes to speak for the application, and then we'll call for anyone who wishes to speak against the application. At the end of the public comments, the applicant will have the opportunity to come back up and make a summary statement and offer any rebuttals concerning public comments that were made, and commissioners may also question the applicant at this time. Members of the public that wish to comment either for or against an application will be recognized and called individually, and should give their name and address to the clerk when they come up to the podium. Please note that all comments tonight must pertain to the public hearing items that we're considering. You may not speak to any other topic or application. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak, and will have a timer visible so that you can pace your remarks. Questions may not be asked, and speakers may not yield unused time to another person. We'll take written questions on the last item on tonight's hearing, the proposed Unified Development Code. So if you'd like to go ahead and be writing those questions down during the hearing, we'll collect those at the end prior to the question and answer session. We have paper and pen that is available on the back table if you need those to write down questions. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of the quorum as commissioners, and this includes being civil and respectful and avoiding personal attacks. Civility is very important, and while we recognize everyone's right to speak at public meetings, and we encourage you to do so, public comment will not be used as a forum to disparage others or make derogatory or discriminatory remarks against individuals or groups. Such conduct is a disruption of our meeting, and any individual who does so will be asked to sit down or leave the room. We ask everyone to help us facilitate a fair and impartial hearing tonight by being courteous to others. We'll give each person sufficient time to express your views, but everyone on either side of each issue must do so in a manner that respects others who hold differing opinions. Anyone who fails to conduct themselves appropriately and violates the rules of the quorum or otherwise disrupts this hearing will be asked to sit down or leave. When you come up to the public, to give public comment, you must come up here to the podium and face the board. You may not turn around and face the audience. You must address your comments to the chair. We ask each person to take care to observe and respect the five-minute time limit. This will be strictly enforced. Members of the public may not interrupt while others are speaking. It's very important that everyone have the opportunity to speak if you wish, but it's also important that everyone can hear what is being said. The first item for tonight's hearing is a conditional use permit. Marie Hendricks of 891 North Fairview Road, Livonia, Georgia, has filed a conditional use permit for an event venue on approximately 23.93 acre tract of land located at 210 Thomas Road and further identified as tax parcel 053169B. So this time, Mr. Delozer is going to come up and present that to the board.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you said, Ms. Hendricks has applied for a conditional use permit, roughly 24 acres on Thomas Road. It's an event venue. It's kind of where it falls into our classification, but it's more of a educational slash event venue. The Planning Commission heard this, and they recommended to approve with no conditions, and that's my recommendation as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delozer. This time, we're going to ask the applicant, Ms. Hendricks, to come forward and just talk to us on behalf of your application.
Sure. What you're referring to as an event center, for me, is a historical agriculture and nature center. It is located at 210 Thomas Road, which is the former homestead of Hoyt and Mitty Harrison, who is, who are the parents, or were the parents, of our late native Franklin County, Phil Harrison. Our mission is to promote appreciation and the value of our Franklin County agricultural heritage and the beautiful natural resources that we have in Franklin County, and to provide an opportunity for there to be education, reflection for the ones who've experienced that in the past, and then new experiences for the ones who have not. We'll do this through generational and family celebrations, through educational events such as nature day camps, varied instructional activities, and community and agricultural events throughout the county, by the county. It will, it actually consists of four distinct components. The first is the home, which was built in 1955 by the Harrisons, and it has been fully restored and furnished in that period furniture. In the backyard is the dairy barn, where they milked and where the old neck stanchions are still in the barn. My intentions are to restore that barn and to be able to do demonstration of farming, or dairy farming and milking in that time period in 1950s. Third component is Papa's Creek. It is actually a hillside that is wooded, and it leads down, at the base of it is a small rock bottom creek. As you look back up over that hillside, you can see the old wagon trail that zigzags down the hillside and actually ends in the remnants of the bank, on each side of the bank, of the bridge that was there, built there. I don't know the exact age of that, but there are 40-year-old, or estimated to be 40-year-old trees in that road, so it has been there many, many, many years. And the component that you're addressing tonight is the shed, and this will be simply the gathering place for all of these events to take place. At Papa's Creek, I forgot to say that it will actually have a nature, a children's nature and sensory play area by the creek, where children can play in the creek, like I did as a child, and have that experience. There'll be seating and picnic and viewing areas. The shed will be the gathering place for these events to take place, or to support the events that will take place. Of course, they'll have the restroom for the children's facilities, or for the children's play area. And then, so the synopsis is that the shed is a component of a historical agriculture and nature center in Franklin County, and I believe it's very important that we recognize, remember, and celebrate the heritage that we have in Franklin County, our rich heritage of agriculture and our beautiful nature, and that's my heart's desire in this proposal.
Okay.
I have, if you'd like to see, each of you, I have a copy of this.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to do public comment, and then we'll have you come back up if commissioners have questions. At this time, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment in favor of this application? If you'd like to raise your hand, and we'll have you come up one at a time. Anyone who would like to comment in favor of the application? Anyone who would like to make a public comment against the application? If you'll raise your hand, we'll have you come up. Anyone who would like to comment against the application? Okay. Hearing none, we'll have Ms. Hendricks come back up. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us before the commissioners ask questions?
I believe I pretty well covered everything. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, Commissioner Wester, do you have any questions?
Thank you for doing something like this.
Okay.
Sounds like a good place to be.
Okay.
I invite all of you to come.
Commissioner Foster, do you have any questions?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. We will consider this for a vote at the following meeting. You're welcome to remain for that meeting. Okay, thank you. Next item is a conditional use permit. Jason Easton of 2311 Starsbridge Road, Cannon, Georgia, has filed an application for a conditional use permit for two poultry houses on an approximately 50 acre tract of land located on Black Snake Road and further identified as tax parcel 057094A. So Mr., we'll have Mr. Delozer come up first, that's okay.
You can go for it if you want to.
Yeah, Mr. Easton has applied for two, two breeder house, conditional use permit on Black Snake Road. Site planning submitted, he can meet all the setbacks and these other requirements for the county. At the Planning Commission meeting, the, there was a neighbor that had some concerns, so the Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve with the condition that the applicant rotate the exhaust fans as far to the east, away from the adjoining property line as possible. There is stipulations with integrators, especially with breeder houses. They do like them running east to west, so there's a limit on how far you can rotate those houses, but that is their, that is their recommendation, and that's fine as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll have Mr. Easton come up and just tell us about his application.
Like the gentleman said, I want to put two breeder hen houses for Phil Dale on Black Snake Road. I've already purchased 50 acres, and we agreed at the first meeting to rotate them seven, seven degrees. That's what the great, the surveyor, that's what he said. He thought we could, we could rotate them that far before we got out of the guidelines that Phil Dale lays out. Not only do we meet the county setbacks, Phil Dale has their own guidelines for setbacks because they always try to go over and beyond to appease the community and make sure everybody's happy. And so not only do I meet the county setbacks, I meet Phil Dale's over and beyond in every, every direction.
All right. Anything else? We're going to call for comments, so we'll have you sit down, and then we'll have you come back up for questions.
Yes, sir.
This time, is there anyone who would like to speak or make a comment in favor of this application? If you would like to speak in favor of the application, please raise your hand. Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Okay. Hearing none. Anyone who would like to speak against the application? If you'll raise your hand, we'll have you come on up. Remember, when you come up to the podium, start by giving your name and address.
My name is Philip Seggers. I'm speaking on behalf of my father, Vernon Seggers, and his address is 857 Black Snake He has lived at the current residence and owned public business next to his home for the past 47 years. He values and understands the importance of the agricultural industry, and especially poultry farms in our county and our community. It is not his intention to cause any distress to the owners of any agricultural business in the county. He is concerned for his health because he is currently battling lung cancer. He would like to request that the proposed poultry houses that are being constructed on Black Snake Road by Mr. Easton have the exhaust fans blow away from his home and business. The current plan of development calls for the exhaust fans to blow in the vicinity of his home and business, whereby the time of completion, when a power line has been cleared, there will be no natural woodland barrier to filter the dust which will blow on pasture If the fans are placed in the opposite direction proposed, they will be blowing towards 200-plus acres of clear-cut woodland that is currently uninhabited. I would like to request a grandfathered-in clause that the stacked house and any carcass disposal structure be placed at the far end of the property, away from my property also. My home and business are the only residence and place of business located near the proposed poultry farm within a half a mile. I feel this request is fair and consider it, consider this request to be a win for both property owners and future owners. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if you would like to, anyone else would like to make a public comment against this application, if you'll raise your hand? Anyone who would like, else who would like to speak against? Okay. Hearing none, we're going to ask Mr. Easton to come back up. You can give, offer rebuttal and tell us anything else that you'd like us to know, and then we'll ask questions if there are questions.
Yes, sir. Touching on what he said about the clearing trees for a power line, there will not have to be any clearing for a power line because there's power line access on the 30 acre adjacent property owned by Mr. Joe Ballinger. There's already a power line on that property that they can just tie onto and run through open air. There's nothing in the way. So I don't see how that would be an issue. Also, we discussed this at the last meeting about turning the houses around, and it would be detrimental to what I'm trying to do financially, to try to turn them around with the grading cost and gravel cost. It would cost me a whole lot of money. And I mentioned before at the other meeting that if I had been contacted beforehand, I might have been willing to try to do something different, but getting ambushed at a meeting in front of a hundred something people didn't really make me want to, didn't really sit well, I guess. I ain't never had no animosity toward Mr. Vernon or Mr. Philip, but just trying to do something good for my family, and I don't, I don't want to go in no further debt, I guess, than I have to. I did make the concession that I would turn them seven degrees because I thought that was fair. You can look at the plaid, I don't know if y'all have it in front of you, but the fans are not facing toward his, toward his house at all, especially once you rotate them some more, that seven degrees.
Does this, this chart reflect the, doesn't reflect the seven degrees?
No, it does not. But this is his business, and this is, sorry, I said it wrong. This is, yeah, this is his business, this is his house. And you can see that they're facing, they're facing toward the 30 acre property.
And so you're going to rotate seven more degrees?
They're going to go seven more degrees this way, yes.
Okay.
And this is nothing but timberland and pasture land, getting it.
On the Ballinger property?
Yes, it's just, it's just woods and pasture is all it is.
And how about chief? What kind?
This is more timberland, more timberland. Yes, sir.
Did all of y'all see and understand on what he's referring to?
I would also note that there are, within that half a mile distance he was talking about from his, I guess from his house or whatever, there are four other breeder hen houses already in operation.
Okay.
Excuse me, five, there are actually five, not four, sorry.
Mr. Franklin, do you have any questions? Okay. Mr. Swales?
You've got a lot of land for, for the two chicken houses. Do you anticipate ever adding to it, or is that not in the plan at all?
Honestly, I hadn't even really thought about it. I guess I just don't know what my boys want to do when they get bigger.
Okay. Mr. Wester?
Now, if you did have to potentially place something else on there, are you good with the ones the question made to move that to the back of the land?
I don't have a problem with that.
Commissioner Foster, do you have questions?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Not unless y'all got more questions.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, we, we'll decide this or vote on this at the meeting following. You're welcome to stay for that. Thank you.
Can I make one more suggestion? Looking at her photo.
Sir, that, I'm sorry, that part, that part's over, okay? We're going to have to move on. We've got a, got a heavy agenda. Thank you. The next item, we're going to briefly mention, it's actually not on the agenda, it was an item that was withdrawn, but we will mention it again in the regular meeting. Joe Gilbert of 205 Williams Bridge Road, Coe, Georgia, filed an application for a conditional use permit for an event venue on an approximately 11.19 acre tract of land located at 1297 Franklin County Boat Rent Road and further identified as tax parcel This item was heard before planning and zoning on May the 19th, 2022, and afterwards the applicant withdrew his application, so it won't be considered tonight, even though it was advertised. The next item is an application for a conditional use permit. Jeremy Stratton of 191 Mile Lane, Carinsville, Georgia, has filed an application for a conditional use permit for a retail farm store on an approximately 9.75 acre tract of land located at 191 Mile Lane and further identified as tax parcel 045004. So Mr. Delozer will come back up.
So as you said, Mr. Stratton has applied for a retail farm store conditional use permit at his residence located at 191 Mile Lane. The intent that he expressed was to sell some frozen meats and dry good type products and have a place where the consumers can come and pick it up at his, at his house. The Planning Commission heard this, and they recommended to approve, and they did not recommend any conditions attached to it. That's my recommendation as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Swales. This time, we're going to ask the applicant to come forward and speak on behalf of their application.
Hey, how's it going? So yeah, that's basically what he said, we're looking at, well, we're already doing it. Raising animals on the property, high-quality, non-GMO organic feeds is what's used to finish animals. Bringing them to USDA inspected butcheries to get a, to get a butcher, we're bringing it back, freezing it, and having the customer have a, have a website built so people can order online, pick up at the store, or they can order online, we can ship it anywhere in the United States. So that's what we're looking to do.
Okay. Well, what we're going to do is have a public comment, just like the other, the other items, then we'll have to come back up, okay? At this time, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? If you'd like to speak in favor, if you'll raise your hand, we'll have you come up. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Okay. Hearing none, anyone who would like to speak against this application? If you'll raise your hand, we'll have you come up. Anyone who would like to speak against? Okay. Simple enough. All right, if you'll come back up, if there's anything else you want to tell us, and then we'll ask questions. And you may have said everything you wanted to.
Pretty good, pretty simple.
Okay. Commissioner Wester, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
No.
Okay. Mr. Swales? Mr. Franklin? Commissioner Foster, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, we will, same as with the others, you're welcome to stay, and we'll decide or have a vote on it at the next meeting to follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item is the proposed draft of the Unified Development Code, or we call it, refer to as UDC. County has proposed a revision of the current zoning ordinances which are known as the Unified Development Code. Mr. Delozer is going to come and review the current draft for the board. We'll have a public comment section afterwards for those wishing to speak either for or against the proposed UDC. We will not take questions during public comment, but after the public comment section, we're going to have a brief recess. If you have questions you'd like to ask, you can write those down, and then we're going to ask them of staff. And I believe Mr. White is here also. He's our consultant who helped us draft this, and so he can answer the more detailed, especially legal matters that related to that. So Mr. Delozer, if you want to.
Yeah, so y'all have the UDC, the first draft. Y'all also have sent out this morning a list of proposed changes. Planning Commission heard this at their last meeting. There's a lot of public input put on it, and then they also had a work session meeting as well. They, they have not had the ability to come up with a recommendation other than to continue to table it. It's for them to have more time to review it and get some more input from the public and have some more time to consult with our consultant and try to come up with a product that fits Franklin County.
Are we going to release the, the list of the proposed changes?
Yes, I wanted y'all to review it today, make sure I didn't miss anything, and if y'all don't have any issues, I can, I can post it tomorrow.
And it, this is listed so that you can see, without having to read that entire document over, you can see exactly what's, what's going to be changed, what the proposed changes. So it makes it easier for you to review what we've changed and then help guide what your thoughts are on that and further input that you're going to give. So commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Wester. Do you have anything you want to ask before we go to public comment? Anything? Commissioner Foster?
See, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. We're going to open this up for public comment. Again, no questions during this part, but if you have questions, we're going to give you a few minutes in a moment to write those down, and then we'll go through another question and answer session. So at this time, first, we'll have comments for those who are in favor of the UDC. So if you have questions and you want to, or if you have, I'm sorry, if you have comments, you want to raise your hand, we'll have you come up. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of the UDC proposal? Okay. Anyone who would like to speak against the UDC? If you want to raise your hand, you can come up and make comments. And again, this is not questions, we'll do the questions later, but if you want to make comments, or you're free to do that. Anyone who would like to make comments? Okay. All right. At this time, we're going to have a brief recess for about five minutes. It's about five to six. There are paper and pens on that rear table back there by the sheriff's deputy. If you need those, if you, if you have any questions you would like to ask, write those down, and we're going to have you bring them up to the clerk, and then when we reconvene, we are going to ask those questions of Mr. White's. So we're staying in recess for about five minutes. Okay, we're going to reconvene at 6:02. We only have a few questions, and most of these pertain to how you get the revised or the revisions, the changes. So we are planning, we'll talk about this later in the regular meeting. We are planning to have additional hearings, and it may be that once everybody's had a chance to see the proposed changes, that they'll have other questions. So we may not have many questions tonight, but we'll start. We have Mr. White's here. If you'll come up to the podium. And some of this, Scott, you may have to answer. The first question is, will the public be given the changes before the committee votes? Yes. And right now, our tentative plan is to hold several monthly public hearings before our regular meeting, board meetings, and give everybody an opportunity to make comment, and we'll do more question and answer sessions before we actually consider it for a vote. Okay, and then the, the second question, how can we get the revised new UDC review?
I'll post a link of that memo that outlines the exact changes on our website below where you can find the draft UDC, so that way you can kind of reference what it did say, what the changes are going to be, and it'll all be at one easy-to-find location.
And when, when can they expect that we'll have that?
If y'all agree with that, with that memo that I sent y'all, I can, I can put it on there tomorrow.
Okay. Commissioners, how do you feel about that? Is everyone good? We'll post them that tomorrow? Commissioner Foster?
I'm good with that.
Okay, all right. This question will probably be of Mr. White, says, what other county or counties in Georgia are you comparing our county zoning to as you've worked on this? Or that you, that you have worked on? I'm not sure if they're asking, I think they're asking what counties that, that you're comparing our county to, and maybe other counties that you've worked on zoning for.
Okay. It's a little bit of a loaded question, but let me start with this. In 1989, I started working for the region, including Franklin County, as a regional planner for the Georgia mountains. And that, of course, includes Franklin County, White County, Habersham, Hart County, and others. And I worked at that time with Habersham County. They had no zoning at all, and wound up adopting something in 1992. I was the main author for that. I also worked with White County, but had, you know, in rural areas, it can be difficult for the first time to get zoning ordinances adopted. Banks County also wrote one back in 1991. Banks County had an interim zoning resolution, which I prepared and was adopted, and then they went on to adopt a permanent zoning scheme. So in the, in the region itself, in addition to Franklin County, it would be White County, Habersham County. Actually, Reagan County, my, my firm was hired by Reagan County to adopt, to prepare a code. Long story, I won't go into, it's kind of a sad story. Did, did everything, and then the, the vote of the commission changed, the composition changed from three-two in support of it to two to three after the first of the year, and so that, that killed the project, and then they hired me for $53,000, and nothing ever happened with, with the code. So there's another one. There's four, four in the region. Then a big one is that most of what I based it on is Jackson County. I've done quite a bit of work in planning and zoning, including zoning administration in Jackson County. They're fast-growing, very fast-growing county, and it was one that I had the template that seemed to fit a pretty rural environment. It's still pretty rural over in Jackson. But the truth is, is that it was tailored, believe it or not. It's, it's It's, it's tailored to Franklin County. There was a lot of discussion about our, our thought given into, for example, your lakefront district. You know, that's a unique area where you're, they don't fit lot sizes. Um, the lot sizes don't meet health rules, and so that's a unique problem that we looked at, and, um, other things, you know, agricultural protection. Another one that I did use, uh, I, I brought the idea of a twenty-five acre minimum lot size in the ag district from Warren County. Warren County is about fifty miles west of Augusta on I-20. Much slower growth, um, but very, very, um, large lots and, and very, very rural and agricultural. So that's the several that I would say I've, I've touched on. There, there's others I've worked for, uh, but they're more probably in, uh, more urban or suburban environments.
You, you also did our draft for the, the, the component part of this. One of them is the commercial industrial for last, last summer.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can take a minute or two to describe that, I'm not sure that everybody really, I know the Commissioners do, but, um, we went into this with a kind of phasing strategy. The first thing was, you know, we felt like your development regulations, things like street widths, whether you have curb and gutter, access considerations, pavement, topping, all of those things, and design for subdivisions, but you really didn't have hardly any good standards in that, and the, the code that you had was done, when was that adopted?
Early eighty-two, something like that.
Is that all? Okay. And, uh, so what we did was a phase strategy where the first thing, and you'll remember this, um, several of the chapters that are in the code now were presented as kind of a partial or phase one of a Unified Development Code. We did it in a format so that we could get that done, and then as we got ready to do zoning or anything else, we could fit that back in there. So there, there's chapters in the, in the UDC on, um, access and parking and loading, um, there's development permitting, all, all of which have been adopted. Soil erosion requirements, um, trying to think of some others, but mostly the land development and subdivision code. There's several, you know, dozens of pages that cover the subdivision process, the, the road standards, the lot and block standards, which are based on zoning. And then, uh, like you said, Mr. Chairman, the, the second phase of this was the county wanted to get in place the commercial and industrial zoning districts because of, obviously, your, um, your current, um, pressure in that area for certain applications that were on the, on the board, ready to be considered. The commission decided that you needed to strengthen that and strengthen it fast. So, all of those went through and have been adopted by the board, were recommended for approval by the planning staff and the planning commission. And so, then that leaves us really the, the bulwark or the part that we've really focused on now, and that's really because it, it, um, affects so many more people than just the other, um, that's where we've gotten more attention, and that is in the, uh, the agricultural districts and the, um, and the residential districts. So we've set out, um, you don't have a lot of residential development. Most of the density is in, uh, um, re, is in the cities. Uh, but we have a rural residential district, and then you have four agricultural districts, but if you look at them, when you look at the lot size allow, they're all the same. You have four districts, you call them something different, but they're all, they're all essentially the same. I mean, there's a business one that allows more commercial in it than the other, and there's one that may emphasize more residential, but they're all, they're all pretty much the same. And we've, we've done a different scheme. Like I said, um, I know people will say this, but, um, it's not a fair criticism to say that this was cooked up somewhere else and brought and dropped in on Franklin County. It wasn't. There was, there was a lot of good, um, original thought that was on it. Yeah, we use models of, uh, what, we don't recreate the wheel, and when, you know, there's a list of a hundred and seventy-five uses, and that potential list, I'm just guessing a number. That list, you know, is good for, is good in Franklin County as it is in Jackson County, 'cause you never know what you're gonna get. So, there is some cut and paste, so to speak, uh, definitely, but, um, but there, the ideas were tailored to Franklin County.
And, and how, how long now have we been, has the county been working on this?
It's been over a year now that we started. My, my contract, I think, was back in, uh.
It was the start of this fiscal year, so July of twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Okay, so it's been about, I guess, about a year now.
But was there some prep work done before that?
The prep work would have been the, the subdivision.
Yeah, and the other.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, the other thing I wanted to mention about that is we, a lot of the legwork is, is going into a geographic information system map where all of your, before we came along, um, the planning director had to keep a list, just a rough list, of all the changes, all the conditional use permits you've had, or all the zoning.
Right.
The map has not been, had not been updated, so you can't look at the, a map now and say, what is the real current picture? But we've done that. We, Scott has fed, fed us with, uh, all of those changes, and in addition to redrawing the entire county, unincorporated area, we've, we've reflected your conditional use numbers and the dates of approval, variances, rezonings, and, you know, we've made a pretty good effort to get that, get that right. It's not always gonna be a perfect, perfect situation, but.
So the, the updated map, the most recent map, does that have all the, like from twenty-twelve? I think twenty-twelve was the last time the zoning map was approved.
The one that our current approval, I think, I mean.
Right, the most recent version.
I think it was done in two thou, I think the most recent one was actually two thousand eighteen.
No, I mean, the, in this process, the one that you just released most recently, does it have all those changes he's talking?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, all the way through.
And, and keep in mind that we didn't, we weren't updating it, 'cause we changed, you know, we, I think you've heard me say, you've seen the memo that I wrote when we started talking about three acre lot sizes and things like that. But the, um, the scheme for zoning has changed pretty significantly, and so the map is a redraw starting from, from scratch with these new zoning districts in mind, not your old ones. So it wasn't like an update where we took part of what you had now and changed it or add to it. We started for the, with a clean slate and went parcel by parcel to identify what the use was and then what the appropriate zoning district was for.
Okay. Well, I think what we'll do is just give each Commissioner an opportunity to ask questions, 'cause you're, you're the person who knows the most about this, and this is a good time. So let's start with Commissioner Wester. You over there, huh?
I'm good.
Mr. Franklin?
How long will it be, uh, before it's finished? You have an idea?
It's really up to the commission now, because we brought, we, well, we brought you a draft, um, that the staff was comfortable with, that I'm comfortable with, but understanding, you know, you got a large citizenry out there, and, and they have no real way of just instantly gaining knowledge of it and understanding it. And that's the process that we're in now, and I understand and agree with the board, any, uh, any decision you have to hold additional work sessions or provide additional information to people out there so that they, uh, that they don't feel like we're just trying to rush this past them, and they, you know, the, the nervousness or the, um, apprehension that somebody might have comes as a result of really trying to move too fast. And I see, I think that, I hear the Commissioners saying, you know, let, let's let people, give them time to look at the map and to understand. Scott's been answering a lot of questions. A lot of people have come in and said, well, I don't wanna be in that zoning district, I wanna be in a different one. And we've made, I think, two sets of changes already, and we'll, we'll continue making those until, uh, until we're told that, until we're told that, that we have it right. So, to answer your question, I mean, it, you're at public hearing today, and if you were, if everybody was a hundred percent comfortable, you could adopt it tonight. But you, of course, you're not, you're not gonna do that. And so, um, you know, another, I would say another month or two should be enough time to, well, the planning commission is a, is a dark horse in this too, you know? They, uh, debated whether they wanted to go through it page by page and so forth, and, um, we don't wanna shortchange them as well. And if they wanted to take, uh, another month or two while you're listening to the public or while you're continuing to accept comments about the ordinance, and if, if people will raise concerns, I think we have pretty good answers for them, and it's my belief, you know, it's never gonna be perfect, and it's never gonna satisfy everybody. I mean, we're trying to balance two extremes here, which is, you know, a, a heavy, um, agricultural intensive industry with poultry houses and, and people who, uh, don't want that, and, you know, on the other hand, we have folks who are, are looking with real estate dollars signs in their minds and wanting to develop the next subdivision and make money out of their, their precious land, uh, and those who don't wanna see that. So we're, you know, we're having to try and balance and find the happy medium between those. So, I mean, again, to try and answer it, I would say, if we give the public and the planning commission another forty-five to sixty days, um, we should be ready to come back with you with a final map and a final ordinance and, uh, and, and bring it to you for adoption, and you have, have some comfort level that we've touched base with.
Do you think you could come back to our, uh, regular meeting, public hearing in July? Uh, what's, what's our date? It's not gonna be the first? The ele, it'll be July the eleventh?
Is it a Monday?
Yes.
First Monday, second?
It, it, normally it's first Monday, but 'cause of Fourth of July, it's, we're pushing it back a week.
Yeah, well, I'm a one-man show, and I know in Jefferson, I had, that's a really popular night, second Monday. It seems like everybody, every local government loves to work, loves to hold their meetings on.
We, uh, we may do this again, uh, for August too, with a, at least toward, a, as you were saying, two more months.
Yeah.
Having a hearing, uh, having another hearing on this in July, and then again in August before we consider it. So i, if it weren't possible for you to come in July, do you think you'd come in August? That would be the first Monday night too.
Are you on the first Monday then?
Yeah. Then, I, I don't think there's any reason why we would postpone August.
Well, I'll just have to make, I'll just have to make adjustments if we can, uh.
Okay.
If we can offset them, maybe, maybe we could offset by, by an hour or hour and a half, um, that sure might help me too.
Okay.
But I'll do what I can.
Let, let me ask Commissioner Foster, do you have any questions before we close this out?
I have one thing, uh, Mr. Jared Hitt explained his reasoning behind, if gone abroad, who would react to a lot size?
Oh. Yeah, I used in the planning commission meeting, um, when the, the idea, there was some support for a three acres, changing your, your minimum across the county from a one and one and a half acre to three acre minimum, and I said it was a recipe for rural sprawl, and that three acres is, and I use the term, it's, uh, too big to farm and too, no, too big to mow and too little to farm. So you're hitting that spot where it's not really, you know, what I'd rather see you do from a growth management standpoint is keep your, keep your housing lots small, one and a half, small's not really, it's not that small, but one and a half to two, or we were even gonna go up to three, but make that a maximum, and then site those houses in areas where then you don't put them in the middle of the field where then you can't, you gotta farm around it. You know, give some thought to where you put those houses, and the idea was that if you, if you used up, you're gonna use up less land over time at one acre, two acre, maybe three acre max than you are if you tell everybody they have to be three acres. You're, you're going to spread everything out further, you're gonna have pressure to spread it out further in your rural areas, and you really wanna keep those as, um, as rural and agricultural as you can. We're, we're making, uh, exceptions for farmers. We, you know, like I said, the, the intensive agriculture, the twenty-five acre lot size, that's big. You don't wanna be, people won't be subdividing that much land there, but we also wanna let the farmers have enough small lots to give to their kids, you know, the family transfers and so forth. And as long as those are, you know, limited in nature, then you're not gonna, you're not gonna hurt or destroy or degrade your rural agricultural way of, of, of the county looking. But if you put three acre lots, you spread it out, it's harder. I think you get my point. It's harder to do farming, you're, you're putting more houses in more scattered locations, which are more likely to then have some impacts on farmland and more people to gripe about whether they're being impacted by manure and chicken houses and things like that.
Okay. Well, we really appreciate you coming, and we hope that we can work it out where you can come again to at least one of the other areas.
Sure, we will. We will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This time, Commissioners, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester's made the motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Swale, second's the motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote? Okay. The motion will carry four to zero, and we stand adjourned. We will reconvene at six thirty for the regular meeting. So we stand adjourned. This time, I call to order a regular board meeting of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, June the sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty PM, uh, at the Franklin County Justice Center in Karnesville, Georgia. We note for the record, we have a quorum consisting of all five Commissioners. We have four Commissioners present, and Commissioner Kyle Foster couldn't join us physically tonight, but he's with us by Zoom. So Commissioner Foster, are you present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna have an invocation, and afterwards, we just ask everyone to remain standing and join us in the place. Please stand. Well, thank you for this wonderful county that we live in, and we are, are thankful to you for all the good things and the many blessings that you provided us. Give us wisdom as we consider all these important issues and try to weigh what's best for our county as we go forward in the future. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, is there a motion to approve the agenda, the meeting agenda tonight as presented?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Franklin's made the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester, a second to the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll motion that's first.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero, and tonight's agenda is approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is a personnel report. Mr. Turner, do you have anything to report to us?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the prior meeting minutes from the following meetings. A public hearing on May the second, two thousand twenty-two, a regular board meeting on May the second, two thousand twenty-two, a special call meeting on May the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, a budget hearing on May the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and a work session on May the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. All Commissioners have been provided with a copy, a draft copy of the minutes. Do you know of any corrections that need to be made? Commissioner Foster, you know of any corrections?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes as presented?
Make a motion that we approve the prior meeting minutes as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester's made a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes as presented. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Swale has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the prior meeting minutes as presented, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll go first.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero, and the prior meeting minutes are approved as presented. This time, we're gonna open the meeting for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any member of the public may speak on any topic of concern that they would like to address the board, with the exception that no comments are allowed on pending planning and zoning items, as we've just had a public hearing for that purpose. This is a comment section only. If you have questions, we ask that you just submit those in writing to the clerk at the end of the meeting, and someone will contact you within a few days and try to respond to your questions and concerns. When you come up to the podium, please begin by giving your name and address. In order to facilitate the meeting and allow everyone an opportunity to speak, each person must limit their comments to five minutes or less. must limit their comments to five minutes or less. Each person may only speak once and you may not yield unused time to another person. A timer will be visible with a display so that you can pay your remarks. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of decorum as commissioners, including being civil and respectful and avoiding personal attacks. Civility is very important and while we recognize everyone's right to speak at a public meeting and we encourage you to do so, public comment will not be used as a forum to disparage others or make derogatory or discriminatory remarks against individuals or groups. Such conduct is a disruption of our meeting and anyone who engages in that kind of conduct will be asked to sit down or leave. When you come up to the po, to the public comment, to give public comment, you must come to the podium and face the board. All comments must be addressed to the chair and those speaking may not turn and address the crowd. We ask each person to take care, to observe and respect. The five-minute time limit will strictly enforce that. Members of the public also may not interrupt while someone else is speaking. It's very important that everyone hear and that everyone can be heard. So at this time, if you would like to make a public comment and you'd like to come up to the podium, if you raise your hand, we'll recognize you one at a time. Anyone like to make a public comment? Anyone? Okay. We'll move on to the items for discussion. First item for discussion is conditional use permit application. Marie Hendricks of eight ninety-one North Fairview Road, Livonia, Georgia, has filed a conditional use permit for an event venue on an approximately twenty-three point nine three acre tract of land located at two-ten Thomas Road and further identified as tax parcel zero-five-three-one-six-nine B. So at this time, Mr. Delozer is going to come and summarize that application.
Yeah, so as y'all heard in the, uh, public hearing, what Ms. Hendricks is looking to do, uh, is an event venue, ag center, educational space, so to speak. Planning Commission heard this, they recommended approval with no conditions, that's my recommendation as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Delozer? Mr. Wester? Mr. Swales?
Uh-huh.
Mr. Franklin? Mr. Foster?
No.
Okay. All right. This time, is there a motion to act on the application by Marie Hendricks for a conditional use permit for an event venue on tax parcel zero-five-three-one-six-nine B?
I'll make a motion to approve this conditional use plan permit for Ms. Marie Hendricks, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made the motion to approve the application by Marie Hendricks for a conditional use permit for an event venue on tax parcel zero-five-three-one-six-nine B. Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit application by Marie Hendricks, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero and the conditional use permit for Marie Hendricks is approved. The next item for discussion is conditional use permit application. Jason Easton of two-three-eleven Starsbridge Road, Cannon, Georgia, has filed an application for a conditional use permit for two poultry houses on an approximately fifty acre tract of land located on Black Snake Road and further identified as tax parcel zero-five-seven-zero-nine-four A. Mr. Delozer?
Oh yeah, so the, uh, the planning commission heard this application as well. They recommended to approve it with the condition that the applicant rotate those poultry houses far to the east as allowed and stay within Fielddale's tolerances. At the planning commission meeting, the surveyor that did the survey was present and he, he did indicate that, that a seven degrees rotation of the exhaust end of those chicken houses would, would be the most that they could rotate it and still, um, still be in compliance with the integrator's requirements. So that was, that was the reasoning behind that condition and that's, I, I stand behind the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Wester? Mr. Swales? Mr. Franklin? Commissioner Foster, do you have anything?
No.
You say no?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Delozer. Is there a motion to act on the application by Jason Easton for a conditional use permit for two poultry houses on tax parcel zero-five-seven-zero-nine-four-A?
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Mr. Easton.
And that's with, with the condition added?
Yes.
Do we need to specify seven degrees?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Uh, I'd make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Jason Easton on the condition that he rotates up to a maximum of seven degrees as allowed by his integrator.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Swales has made the motion, so he's made the motion to approve the conditional use permit for two poultry houses on tax parcel zero-five-seven-zero-nine-four-A with the condition that the exhaust end be rotated seven degrees east. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit application by Jason Easton, tax parcel zero-five-seven-zero-nine-four-A with the condition that the exhaust end of the houses are rotated seven degrees east, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero and a conditional use permit for Jason Easton is approved with the conditions attached. Next item, seven C, was withdrawn by the applicant. Joey Gilbert of two-oh-five Williams Bridge Road, Toccoa, Georgia, filed an application for a conditional use permit for an event venue on an approximately eleven point one-nine acre tract of land located at one-two-nine-seven Franklin County Boat Rent Road and further identified as tax parcel zero-seven-zero-D-one-one-six. This item was heard before planning and zoning on May the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and afterwards the application withdrew and so we won't hear that tonight. Next item, seven D, is an application for a conditional use permit. Jeremy Stratton of one-ninety-one Mile Lane, Karnesville, Georgia, has filed an application for a conditional use permit for a retail farm store on an approximately nine point seven-five acre tract of land located at one-ninety-one Mile Lane, further identified as tax parcel zero-four-five-zero-zero-four. Mr. Delozer?
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Stratton's application was heard by the planning commission as well and their recommendation was to approve with no conditions attached.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions? Commissioner Franklin, do you have anything? Mr. Swales? Uh-uh. Mr. Wester? Mr. Foster, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Delozer. Is there a motion to act on the application by Jeremy Stratton for a conditional use permit for a retail farm store on tax parcel zero-four-five-zero-zero-four?
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Mr. Stratton.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Swales has made a motion to approve the application by Jeremy Stratton for a conditional use permit for retail farm store on tax parcel zero-four-five-zero-zero-four. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use application by Jeremy Stratton for tax parcel zero-four-five-zero-zero-four, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero and a conditional use permit for Jeremy Stratton is approved. Next item is the draft proposal of the Unified Development Code. The county has proposed the revision of the current zoning ordinances known as the Unified Development Code and Mr. Delozer is going to come and review the current draft course.
Right, so the current draft, um, there, the planning commission heard it, we've had a lot of public input, we've had input from, uh, staff, commissioners, planning commission members, so there is, there is a lot of changes still going on and more review that needs to happen to it and the planning commission recommended to table this, um, until we can get some more meetings under our belt and get a better, uh, better feeling for the, that this, this UDC will, will fit Franklin County and will protect Franklin County and will achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve with it. That's my recommendation as well.
Okay. We, we had a special call meeting, the board did, on May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two and we decided that we would consider tabling this tonight and that means we return it back to planning and zoning for further review. They've already had a public hearing and a work session, right?
Correct.
It was open to the public. Uh, and, uh, we talked about having public hearings at our regular board meetings in, which we're doing now in June, but also July and August. So is everybody comfortable with that? That will be two more public hearings that we would have along with the rest of our planning and zoning hearings. Are you comfortable with that? And when, will you restate, when are we going to turn or, or release the, the updates? Is that tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow.
Okay. Does that include a, a new version of the zoning map?
So the new version, the, the most updated zoning map was actually published today.
Okay, so it was released today. Is it posted online?
It is, it is. So if you go, if you go to it online, what you see is the most up to date.
And tomorrow, you're just, you're not going to release a full draft, it'll just have the highlighted changes so that everybody can quickly see what we changed.
Right.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we also, at that special call meeting, we passed a ninety-day moratorium on heavy industrial conditional use permits. Our staff's working on a zoning text amendment that would consider special use provisions and the plan would be to consider this for approval before that ninety-day moratorium expired. All of you've had a chance to review that draft. Do we have any questions about that or is there at least a consensus that Mr. Delozer can take that to planning and zoning? It has to go through planning and zoning and then come back to us for a hearing before we approve. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Foster?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Do you have any more questions before we call for a vote? Any questions? Commissioner Foster? Okay. Is there a motion to table the draft Uniform Development Code and refer it back to planning and zoning for additional consideration?
I'll make a motion that we table the draft on the UDC and send it back to planning and zoning for more consideration, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Anybody? Okay. Commissioner Swales seconded the motion. Is there any more discussion? Any discussion? Commissioner Foster, you have anything?
No.
Okay. Hearing no, discussion, all in favor of the motion to table the draft Uniform Development Code and refer it back to planning and zoning for additional consideration, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll make the motion to approve because I'm very young.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero and the draft Uniform Development Code is tabled and referred back to planning and zoning for additional consideration. So just kind of recap, we tabled the UDC, we referred it back to planning and zoning for additional consideration. A revised draft of the UDC will be, or at least the changes will be released tomorrow on the county website. The new updated zoning map was released today on the website. The board is going to have, hold additional public hearings, uh, at our regular board meetings in July and August and with an eye toward tentatively planning to consider the UDC for a vote at that August regular board meeting. Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And by consensus, Mr. Delozer is going to take the zoning text amendment to planning and zoning. And that, that is a draft, there could be a few more tweaks to that, but that's a very short document compared to the overall UDC, uh, but there will be an opportunity for the public to review that and, uh, make comments on that. A copy of that is going to be attached to the minutes for this meeting and made available for public inspection. And it, will we put that, can we put that online tomorrow too?
We can.
Okay, all right. So that'll be online. Any other questions before we move on, Commissioner? Okay. Commissioner Foster, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. The next item is the state-paid county reimbursed personnel contract extension. Uh, each year, the district attorney asks us to sign this and this has to do with how their prosecution staff are, are paid and the county helps pay for that. Commissioners, do you have any questions about the contract? Any questions, Mr. Franklin? Mr. Foster, do you have any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the state-paid county reimbursement contract?
I'll make a motion that we approve the state-paid, uh, county reimbursement contract.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to approve the state-paid county reimbursement contract. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Swales has seconded the motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the state-paid county reimbursement contract, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Motion will pass four to zero and contract is approved and we'll have a copy of that, uh, attached to the minutes for tonight's meeting and available for inspection after the meeting. The next item is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget. We've held three separate budget hearings to consider the, the budget for the next fiscal year, which begins July first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the fiscal year is named for the year that it ends, so the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three starts July first, two thousand twenty-two. We've given opportunities at each hearing for public comment, so I'm going to ask Mr. Turner to present that to us and then we'll consider it for a vote.
Thank you and, um, we have had three public hearings that we need to have, um, and didn't really receive the public comment. Uh, but essentially just, um, just do want, first off, thank all of our staff for hard work that they did and input to this and then our finance office for putting the budget to act, action together, uh, because it is a, a pretty decent undertaking doing that, so I do appreciate everybody's hard work in that. Uh, but essentially with, uh, a bit of an increase this year coming with our budget, we have total revenues of about twenty-five point three million dollars that we're going to be looking for, uh, with total expenses, a slight increase to that as well at about twenty-four point eight million dollars. Um, within this budget, we are also talking about the capital improvement plan that, uh, that we're looking to really kind of lock ourselves into for those five years, just that we can make sure that we, uh, have a plan towards any of our overall infrastructure, buildings, everything included, um, and other things that we already have in the works. Um, so, so everything is balanced, uh, we are a little bit over revenues, over expenses, um, so we can be, uh, revenues over expenses or exactly balanced. Um, so we are typically going to lean more towards being just slightly over, uh, so with everything being in balance, we are just asking for, uh, the budget to be averted.
Okay. And, and that does include the seven percent cover for employees?
It does.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Wester? Mr. Swales? Mr. Franklin? Anything? Commissioner Foster, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to, this is actually in resolution form, we have to adopt a resolution for the budget. So is there a motion to adopt the budget resolution for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the budget resolution for two thousand twenty-three.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Swales has made the motion to adopt fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-three budget resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget resolution, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero and the, and the resolution for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget is approved. We'll have a copy of the budget and the resolution attached to the official minutes of tonight's meeting and available for public inspection. This time, uh, we have announcements, so we'll turn that up. Mr. Turner, do you have anything?
Uh, no announcements, sir.
Okay. Okay, just a reminder, the board has a next meeting on June the 28th here at the Justice Center for a work session. On behalf of the board, I want to thank our staff for all their work on the UDC, including Mr. Delosier. He's spent a lot of time with that. The board has tried to have a very transparent and open process for people to review this and for adoption and we're going above and beyond what we normally do. Normally, by law, we have to have those two public hearings and all of you who have been to hearings before, you're familiar with that. Any zoning issue has to go through legally through those two public hearings. We vitally need to revise our zoning ordinances for our county and the UDC accomplishes that if we can get it into a form that everybody is comfortable with and we've asked our staff to do that. To say the least, it's been a very bruising experience for our staff, in particularly because the public often takes their frustration out on our staff. That's who they deal with. And at times, that, some of the public conduct inside and outside the county offices has been reprehensible. People have gone, have crossed the line and some of the comments they've made, especially toward our staff and that is important because it shouldn't happen. We should be able to discuss things and disagree without carrying it too far and it just seems like that trend is growing and growing and growing over the last few years. I apologize for that to Mr. Delosier and all of our staff. He's done an excellent job with planning and zoning. Until recently, that was a department of one person. One person had to do all of that and that's a difficult job. It's a difficult job to do what you need to do as well as answer all the phone calls, return all the calls, answer the emails and talk to people who come in while you're doing the other things that you have to do and it's a profession, he's a professional, but it's a difficult thing to do. We've recently hired help and he has an assistant, but still, that's quite a job to do. He does an excellent job and I don't think the board could have asked for a better person to do that job for us. So on behalf of the board, we appreciate your work. Commissioner Franklin, do you have any announcements? Okay, Commissioner Foster, well, let's go to Commissioner Foster. Is he still with us?
Just thank you, Scott, for that one too.
Okay, Mistress Wells, do you have anything?
No, well, yeah, I can't, I can't help myself. I try to get away with these things and not say anything, but anyway. I agree with what you said, Jason, and all of our staff does so much with so little. They're woefully underpaid compared to other areas and understaffed and, but they pour their heart into their job. And so I am so grateful for Scott, for our manager, for everyone that digs deep and has dug deep in the past on behalf of the county. You know, in the past, it used to be kind of one of those deals where people would call or talk to me and they'd let their opinions be known and sometimes they would have disparaging comments about people. And in the past, I would, I would let people share their opinion. Usually, I would share the other side of their argument or try to make them understand the process or, you know, take up for whoever they were bad-mouthing, but I'm just going to say plainly and clearly now, if you talk to me, if I hear a bad word out of your mouth about someone that I know has a good heart and they do their best, I'm going to shut it down and that's going to be the end of it. The behavior that I've seen over the past few months is reprehensible to me. The comments that I've seen online that have been tolerated are, it's just garbage. It's just childish. We all can do more and we all can do better and, you know, we are unified as a county. And so I would encourage you to encourage those that are that way to grow up and behave themselves.
Commissioner Wester, do you have anything?
I just want to echo what Chairman Magrum said and Commissioner Swales said. I'm going to say this, social media will be the downfall of this society because too many people can sit behind a keyboard and say what they want to and call somebody names, make accusations, but never stand up and have to face the people face to face. I have been accused of taking money. I have been accused of taking private jet rides. I have been accused of everything along with these three men up here and Commissioner Foster. Not one single person that has made those accusations has picked this up and called me. Not one person has come to me face to face and talked to me about it. If you don't have the guts to get out from behind a keyboard, don't run your mouth. I'm tired of it. This man right here has worked hard on this UDC. We have asked him, we did. Commissioner, County Manager Turner didn't ask you, we did. We asked for this to happen. He went in our direction. When a man can't even go into an elementary school to watch his kid get an award without getting attacked, that's pretty damn sorry right there that you want to attack somebody who had no purpose in this other than us telling them to do it. That is irritating. We're not Washington DC. We are not these paid politicians that are walking out here with millions of dollars. He's not making millions of dollars. He's not. Nobody that works for this county is making that money, but yet we suffer the abuse. The abuse of people behind a keyboard who want to make false accusations and everything else. And it's time to stop. It's time to stop. One thing I was proud of with Franklin County is we could call and talk to each other. Whether you agreed, you disagreed, whatever, but we could talk to each other. That's going away fast because nobody wants to pick this up and come in or come into this meeting and have a conversation about it. And I'm tired of it. People ask me, why, why'd you not run again? Here's your good reason. Putting up with the public wears on you and you got to have a heart for it. And every single person that's up here, these gentlemen right here, Ms. Finger, everybody has a heart for it. And we want to see Franklin County get better. But after a while, it gets old getting beat down all the time. And I'm tired of seeing good people beat down constantly. So if you want to sit behind a keyboard and make accusations, that's fine. But just know, I will start calling you out and I'm tired of it. And the ones that have, don't delete it because I can screenshot it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The other thing I'll say, we have worked over the last few years to make everything available as much as possible. We put it out there. It's online in multiple formats. And the great thing is, all of you and a lot of the public knows about these issues because we put it out there. We're not trying to hide anything. Unless it's some kind of confidential legal issue, you know about it because we put it out there. We don't make any secret of it. So utilize that, but if you have questions, come to all of us, call us or come to the meetings and ask. I hope that everybody will have a chance to review the proposed revisions and we have some good questions at our next hearing because we want to hear your input, we want to hear your answers and give a chance, or your questions and give our staff a chance to answer those. Any other question or any other comments before we?
I'll just implore everybody, let's, let's, let's not, let's not assume the worst in each other. Let's hope for the best. Let's assume the best. Let's assume good intentions, but dig deep to get the information you want. I think that's a good starting point. For those keyboard warriors that, you know, say a lot but never show up and then they talk about the church they go to on Sunday, you know, I hope that they've repented. I hope that they're on their knees this Sunday and they say, you know what, I've had a bad attitude and I've said some harsh things that don't work true. And so I can hope, but, you know.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Swales.
My comments aren't necessarily directed at anybody in here because obviously all of you take pride in what's going on with the county and y'all come to the meetings and most of y'all do call whenever y'all have questions and I greatly appreciate that. But I have hit my point where I'm done with it. I'm tired of seeing good people trashed and I'm tired of seeing good people attacked. And at some point, it's got to stop because Franklin County is better than that. We're not Washington DC.
Yeah, we're to the point where we wanted to lose good employees because of the public's behavior and that shouldn't happen. The ire should be on the publicly elected officials. If you don't like what we do, don't vote for us for the next election. That's where your control is. I mean, you vote for, you vote for officials to represent you and they're not always going to make decisions that you agree with and so when election time comes around, you have to kind of weigh that. But the paid staff are working in our direction and that's where your ire should be toward us and not toward our staff. All right, at this time, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, Commissioner Swales has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Wester is second to the motion. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Foster, how do you vote? Okay, motion will carry four to zero and we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.